Good afternoon, everyone. It's a couple of minutes after 1:00. And hello. My name is Alicia Barton. I'm president and CEO of the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, otherwise known as NYSERTA, and Chair of the Energy Planning Board. Welcome and good afternoon again to the 14th meeting of the New York State Energy Planning Board. Of course, this is a very unusual and format for our board meeting today, which is occurring under the extraordinary circumstances of the state's, New York State's, response to the COVID-19 outbreak. I do want to thank our board members, as well as everyone else that's in attendance online today for joining us. I hope that you and your families are safe and well and in good health during this extremely challenging time for our state. But we are also grateful for the opportunity to be able to convene in this format in order to continue doing our important work as a state as regards energy planning. I do want to, you know, just make one brief acknowledgement in relation to the COVID-19 crisis. Governor Cuomo is finishing up his daily, daily press briefing and, you know, noted the state's ongoing extraordinary efforts to fight the virus. He also, you know, noted the heartbreaking and tragic loss of life that we've seen in New York already and has directed flags be flown at half-mast in honor of everyone that has their life to this, to this terrible virus. And unfortunately, he noted that we have already lost more than 6,000 New York lives. So with the governor's, you know, leadership and directive to acknowledge, acknowledge those loss in that way, and given we are an official public body convened under the laws of New York State, I also wanted to briefly acknowledge that loss as well. And again, send best wishes for continued health and safety to, to, to everyone around the state and around the country. With that, we are going to proceed with, with today's, today's 14th meeting of the New York State Energy Planning Board. We have many of the board members in attendance, and what I'd like to do is start by asking Valerie Milanovich, Secretary to the Board from our team at NYSERTA, to call the role.
Thank you, Alicia. Hopefully you can hear me?
Yes, I can.
Excellent. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. And when I state your name, please acknowledge your participation in today's New York State Energy Planning Board meeting. I apologize in advance for any mispronouncements and a reminder that you might need to remove yourself from mute. With that, I acknowledge the obvious participation of Alicia Barton. Chair Rhodes? In case he's on mute, I'll come back. Elizabeth Louis Michael, on behalf of Commissioner Zucker.
Did you hear me? I said, yes, I'm here.
Oh, thank you. I did not hear you. Thank you. Jared Snyder, on behalf of Commissioner Fagos. I see he has a mute symbol.
Yes, I am here.
Oh, great. Thanks, Jared. Commissioner Dominguez? Commissioner Dominguez?
Valerie, I see Lynn Watzkopf for the Commissioner. Lynn, you're on mute. If you could just acknowledge you're on.
Commissioner is on as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you. Aaron Hogan, on behalf of Commissioner Rosado. Present. Brian Wright, on behalf of Commissioner Murphy. Brian Wright, on behalf of Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Ball?
I am here.
Thank you. Sean Ubert, on behalf of Assemblyman Kusick. Sean Ubert, on behalf of Assemblyman Kusick.
Yes, present.
Thank you. Rich Dewey, from the NYSHO.
Good afternoon. I'm present.
Thank you. James Weinbreak?
Yeah.
William Suggs? Mr. Suggs, was that you?
I am here. Suggs.
Commissioner Gertler?
Yes, we.
Commissioner Riordan? I'm not sure if I, if I heard.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This is Elizabeth Martin.
Excellent. Thank you. And circling back to Chair Rhodes? But given that, Madam Chair, I note the presence of a quorum for today's New York State Energy Planning Board meeting.
Thank you. And thanks, everyone, the, the, the members of the board and the designees for, for, once again, for, for joining us today. And thank you for everybody's cooperation with, with the webinar format. I know, I know that the logistics can be a bit tricky, muting and unmuting, and the, we do occasionally get feedback if two people are unmuted at the same time, which, which can be challenging. So I'm going to ask, once again, if everybody who's not speaking could please try to ensure that your phone is on mute to minimize any, any background noise that we, that we may hear. I did also want to acknowledge the presence of a new member of the State Energy Planning Board who, who did identify as being present, William Suggs. Welcome to the, the New York State Energy Planning Board. And Mr. Suggs, would, would you like to take a moment to introduce yourself to the, the members of the planning board and the members of the public today?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me, have given, provided me the opportunity to join this board. And based upon my experience from the energy sector for over 32 years, and also from a nonprofit side of the business with energy professionals, I hope that I can somehow bring something to the table to support our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you so much again for joining us, and we're delighted to have you joining the Energy Planning Board in time for, for our work today to, to take up the, the proposed amendments to the, to the state energy plan. So I'm going to start with some ongoing notes and housekeeping. Notice of the meeting was provided to the public and the press on April 1st, 2020. As with all planning board meetings and with today's webinar, and, and while today's webinar is available to the public, we're not taking questions or comments from the members, from members of the public, excuse me, during our session. Members of the, of the board certainly may participate in the conversation. The webinar is being livestreamed, and also a recording of the webinar, as well as a written transcript of the meeting, will be uploaded onto the Energy Planning Board website within the next few days, as, as soon as we are able to. And so, next, next slide, we'll move to the agenda. Thank you. And I'm sorry, one other housekeeping item before I, I kick us into the, to the full agenda. Are there any members of, of the Energy Planning Board who did not have the opportunity to identify themselves yet who have joined us on the phone? Okay. All right, then. First, we'll review the, the minutes from the board's last meeting. Then I will briefly remind us of the context and the language of the draft amendment that the board approved for public comment at our December 2019 meeting, our, our last meeting. We will then hear from John Williams, NYSERTA's Vice President for Policy and Regulatory Affairs on the Public Comment Process and the Feedback Received. And we will then discuss and vote on a resolution to adopt the amendment, and finally, we'll consider any other business of the planning board. Next slide, please. So our first item to advance is, and if you go to the, to the prior slide, please, the, our first item to advance is the minutes from the board meeting held on December 18th, 2019. A copy of the draft minutes was provided to the, the members of the board in advance of the meeting. I'd like to seek approval of these minutes. So for those of you who participated in the December 2019 meeting, do you have any corrections or statements regarding the minutes? And I'll pause here for any comments from the members. Hearing none, then, with your approval, we will post the minutes to the website to maintain a full record of the proceedings. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the December 18th, 2019 board meeting?
So moved.
And apologies, could, when you make a motion or a second, could you also identify yourselves for purposes of, of the minutes?
James Weinbreak.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Jared Snyder, Jared Snyder, second.
Thank you, Jared. All in favor? If you can unmute briefly to say aye.
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 Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. The, the minutes of the meeting will be, will be posted on the website, hearing, hearing no votes and opposition. So with that, we will continue to the next slide, please. So as a brief reminder, I want to provide the context and background for the public on our amendment process. And note that, you know, amending the state energy plan is by initiative of the board upon a finding that, quote, "a material and substantial change in fact or circumstance since the most recent plan was adopted," end quote, has occurred. Action upon that amendment can only occur after receipt and consideration of public comments on that amendment is completed. Importantly, last year, Governor Cuomo signed into law the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. Central to this act are a number of clean energy goals, further advancing the goals that the prior energy plan previously had set out. And it is these new statutory requirements that have resulted in a change of circumstance warranting this amendment to the energy plan. The draft amendment issued by the planning board in December is intended to update the clean energy goals of the existing state energy plan and reflect the new goals established by the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, as well as address issues facing host communities of power plants as New York transitions to a clean energy future. Next slide, please. Pardon me. Noting the, the slide that's being presented around clean energy and greenhouse gas reduction goals, we, we presented this slide at, at the December meeting of the State Energy Planning Board as well, which shows the goals of the state energy plan alongside the new requirements of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. Our 40 by 30 and 85, 80 by 50 emissions reduction goals, excuse me, 85 by 50 emission reduction goals are amongst the most aggressive greenhouse gas reduction goals of any major economy, as are many of the goals in the Climate Act, which includes 70% renewable energy by 2030 and 100% clean electricity by 2040. To achieve these goals, the state will build 9,000 megawatts of offshore wind by 2035, 6,000 megawatts of distributed solar by 2025, 3,000 megawatts of energy storage by 2030. And in addition, the state will realize 185 trillion British thermal units of onsite energy savings by 2025, and no less, and the law also provides that no less than 35% of the benefits from clean energy investments will go to disadvantaged communities. The Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act has certainly advanced the goals from the prior state energy plan, as you can see by comparison, and, and pushes New York, New York forward towards ultimately realizing, again, some of the most ambitious efforts around the country and indeed the world to fight climate change. Next slide, please. In addition to the clean energy goals, the amendment recognizes the need to support our communities that will see significant changes in their local economies in the transition to clean energy. The Electric Generation Facility Cessation Mitigation Program, for short, the mitigation program, was created in 2015 to provide assistance to local government entities impacted by revenue losses due to the retirement or closure of electricity generating facilities. The need for this support is due to changing market conditions for power plants, as well as other state policies that are creating a healthier and cleaner electric generation sector. This amendment proposes for the Public Service Commission to develop a process to consider a mechanism that would provide stable support to the state's Electric Generation Facility Cessation Mitigation Program. These are the issues that we have proposed for amendment, and I will now ask John Williams to explain the public comment process that was engaged and to provide a summary of the comments received for the board's information. Next slide, please. And John Williams, are, are you there?
I'm here, Alicia. Thanks. And can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. And if we could go to the next slide, please. So our public comment process began with the publication of a notice for public comment on the draft amendment. That notice was published in the State Register on January 8th of 2020. What that did at that publication date, then, we were, we noted we would accept written comments on the draft amendment through March 9th. Comments were submitted to the state energy plan website. I will just notice for the board that there was a small number of comments that were received after that deadline, but we have incorporated all of those comments in the total comments that we, we took consideration of through this process. In addition to the written comment process, we also held two public hearings on the draft amendment. The first public hearing was held in Albany on February 27, and the second public hearing was in New York City on March 2nd. We could go to the next slide, please. So in looking at the, the comments, we received a total of 120 comments. They were submitted by 101 different commenters. All of these comments will also be made available on the energy plan website after this meeting. 17 of those comments were received were proposed, on the proposed clean energy goals. Five expressing support for that, 12 expressing opposition to those clean energy goals. I will just note for the board that really the goals that have been proposed in this draft amendment are reflective of the goals as they were established in the Climate Act. So there's no change from what is currently statutory law in New York State. Those are the goals that have been advanced through the draft amendment. On the mitigation fund, there were some significantly more comments, 73 comments were received expressing support for the mitigation fund proposal, only one in opposition. I will note that there were an additional 29 comments that were received that were not really on point to the perspectives, either directly or indirectly related to the draft amendment. These covered a, a number of individualized issues, and they will be noted for the comment, but did not appear to require change as we have, as we have seen in the proposal. Next slide, please. So one thing that we have recommended, however, due to those public comments, is one change to the text of the proposed amendment. As you would note, that a significant number did not require a change in the amendment, but this one, we are putting in front of the board for consideration. The proposed amendment includes a reference to the Climate Act. It would sit alongside a reference that was existing in the proposed amendment to Section 7.2 of that Climate Act, which requires state agencies to consider the impact of greenhouse gas emissions in their permitting and licensing activities. The recommended language would be for inclusion to reference, to, a reference to Section 7.3 of the Climate Act, which requires that state agencies not disproportionately burden disadvantaged communities in considering and issuing permits, licenses, and other approvals, as well as to prioritize reductions of co-pollutants and greenhouse gases in those communities. So what this provision was intended to do was direct for energy, for outcomes of our energy decision-making, emphasizing the nature that as we are making clean energy decisions in sync with the Climate Act, we're also recommending that those considerations account for the outcomes sought in Section 7.3 of the amendment. So as we're thinking about greenhouse gases generally, we also need to think about proposed impacts to disadvantaged communities in those possible energy decisions as they, as they come forward. So that would be the one recommended change coming through the public comment process. Everything else, I think, we see as permitting for the, for the advancement of the proposed amendment as it, as it was initially approved by the board in December. And so with that, I will hand it back to Alicia.
Thank you, John. And before I, I move to the discussion, I did want to ask again if there are any members of the State Energy Planning Board who were not able to acknowledge their presence earlier. Chair Rhodes, are, are you able to acknowledge your presence?
I am on. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Thank you, John.
Okay. I've been listening the whole time, but I'm now, but it'll go. Thank you very much.
That's excellent. Thank you, John. Okay. So can we go to the, to the next slide, please? I want to, I want to start by, by thanking the individuals and organizations who provided their comments, the comments that John Williams just, just summarized. We definitely appreciate all of the thoughts and opinions and considerations expressed regarding the draft amendment, and it certainly benefits the process to have robust public input and informs the, the decision-making of the planning board itself. Before, before opening it up to discussion by the board members to consider the draft amendment, I'll just make a couple of comments. First, just to state affirmatively, I support the, the addition of the language referencing Section 3 of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act that John Williams just described on the, on the, the previous slide. The equity considerations that are contained within that section are really an integral piece of the achievement of a clean energy economy in New York. And the reference in this energy plan, I think, helps provide important additional guidance to agencies and is, is certainly synchronized with the intended outcomes of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act when considering energy-related policies and, and projects. So that is, I believe, an appropriate amendment to make to the draft, draft plan amendment that was provided. This provision also sits in parallel with the incorporation of, of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, Section 7, Prence 2, already contained in the amendment, which provides similar guidance to agencies with respect to the greenhouse gas emissions impacts of their decision-making. Given the direct consequence to energy decision-making with respect to the clean energy goals, again, I, I think that gives reason for, for us and for my support and, and recommendation of the inclusion of the reference. Second, I want to, I want to also acknowledge other comments that were received, which are very valuable components of our energy and policy. For example, we received thoughts that discuss the value of renewable hydrogen as a future energy resource, as well as the need for equitable workforce opportunities. The need for advanced energy technologies and the need to ensure new career opportunities for New Yorkers are centrally important aspects of our energy policy from my standpoint. While they're not the subject of this amendment, I'd like to assure those commenters that those issues will have, you know, forum and be given due consideration by the state for further discussion, for example, in the State's Climate Action Council, whether through the advisory panels and working groups to that body, or in the course of developing the scoping plan. One example I'm very familiar with is, is the equitable creation of quality jobs, which will be addressed through the work of the Just Transition Working Group, which I co-chair alongside our Labor Commissioner Roberta Riordan. So I'd like to note that these valuable comments will help to inform other key work in New York as we advance our climate policy, and therefore, again, continue to, to thank the, the individuals and organizations who took the time and effort to comment and inform this, this process. Next slide, please. Sorry. My apologies. Can you go back to the prior slide? So with that, I'll, I'll pause here, and this will commence the discussion of the planning board ahead of, ahead of consideration of, of the motion. So I'll open the board, the, the floor to members of the State Energy Planning Board for any questions or comments. In order to, to facilitate that, I just ask, you know, we'll, we'll try In order to facilitate that, I just ask, you know, we'll try to go one at a time, and I'll open it up for the first comment, and then I'll pause between commenters to allow the board to provide any questions or comments. Are there any comments or questions from members of the Energy Planning Board?
This is John Rhodes.
Yes, John, yes, thank you.
I would, I have no questions. I understand these thoroughly, and I think both the incorporation of the CFCPA ambitions and the station funding for affected sites is necessary and prudent and sensible, and I'm going to support, support these when it comes time to a vote.
Thank you for those comments, Chair Rhodes. I'll pause just for an additional, perhaps, you know, 30 seconds, in case there are any additional questions or comments, before I ask for a motion on the amendment. With that, I will ask if I, if anyone would make a motion on the resolution in front of the Planning Board today.
This is Jamie Weinbreak, so moved.
Thank you, Jamie. Do I have a second?
This is Jared Snyder, I second the motion.
Thank you, Jared. In order to vote on the resolution, I'd like to ask the Secretary to the Board, Val Milanovich, to just do the roll call so that we have a clear record for voting. Val, can you ask for the votes?
My pleasure. Planning Board Chair Barton, how do you vote?
I should have said, all in favor, say aye, so I say aye.
Okay, Chair Rhodes?
Aye.
Elizabeth Louis Michael? Aye. Jared Snyder?
Aye.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Aye.
Aaron Hogan?
Aye.
Brian Wright?
Aye.
Commissioner Ball?
Aye.
Sean Eubert?
Aye.
Richard Dewey?
Aye.
Jamie Weinbreak?
Aye.
William Suggs?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Gertler?
Commissioner Gertler? How about Commissioner Reardon?
This is Elizabeth Martin, aye.
Elizabeth Martin, okay, thank you. I'm going to call again for Commissioner Gertler, if he's on, or his designee, Vincent Ravashear.
that, but having called the rest of the roll, and hearing all in favor and none opposed, we will consider the resolution adopted, the resolution is passed, and thank you all again for your participation. If we can go to the last slide, the last agenda item is really any other, any other business, so I will open the line to any of the Planning Board members who would like to raise any other business for the State Energy Planning Board. If you can go to the next slide, please. All right, hearing, hearing no other business, I will note, for the record, that our next steps will be to put the new language, the language of the new amendment on the Energy Plan website after this meeting. In a few days, we'll also post the recording of this meeting, along with a written transcript, to the Energy Plan website. If there are no other questions, I will simply offer, again, my gratitude for everyone's participation today, my appreciation for everyone's support of these important matters to advance our work in advancing on climate change, clean energy, and transitioning our energy system for the state of New York. And I will ask for a, to adjourn.
Jamie Weinbreak, so moved.
Second?
John Rhodes, second.
Thank you. All in favor, if I can hear some ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I, I'll ask for any opposed. Thanks again for everyone's coordination and flexibility with the virtual format due to the circumstances. I thank you all for your time today, and again, wish each of you and your family and loved ones, and all New Yorkers, continued good health and safety. Thank you very much, we are adjourned.
You, Alicia.
Thank you.